I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee, Tuesday, January 7th here at the Middle High School Library at 7:00 PM. Before we get started, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to make note that at 7:30 PM, we'll be having a public budget hearing on our fiscal year 2021 budget. And also, I want, this is our first meeting since the Abington High School football team won the Division VII state championship, so I just wanted to congratulate them. Ms. Augusta, congratulations to your son.
Thank you very much.
So I wanted to get that out. So to get started, hearing your visitors, anybody wish to speak about anything on the agenda before we get started? Excellent, thank you. Reading an approval of minutes, the first set of minutes is from our regular meeting on November 26, 2019. Have to get a chance to review if you're looking for a motion to approve them or not.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?
I'm sorry, I don't know if this is like, I did have a question about the minutes, I don't know if I should have asked it before we made the motion. Like, it's not going to affect the approval.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
It's just in the notes about the revisions to the elementary report cards.
Yep.
It says, "A discussion took place about the need to review current progress reports and process." I just wanted to make a note, I know we talked about it last time, but can we get an update? Like, are we going to be updated again as that will be like on the agenda in the future? Okay.
Yes. I appreciate you raise your hand and saying you'd like to get one, which I think is what you're saying.
Yeah, I just wanted, don't want to forget to ask about that, and the minutes kind of prompted me to.
Okay. All right, that's okay.
Thank you.
I think we all approved it anyway, right?
Yeah.
So the next set of minutes is from our executive session on the same night regarding the unit B job descriptions. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on. Update from the Director of Student Services, Mr. Robbins. Go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here to share an update from the Department of Student Services. So the unifying theme of our department is keeping our district in compliance with state and federal regulations that are designed to promote equity for historically disadvantaged students. The four main programs that our department, that falls under our department's umbrella are special education, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, the McKinney-Vento-Homless Assistance Act, and English Language Education. And tonight, I'm just going to give us an overview of how things are going in each of these areas in Abington. All right. So starting first with Section 504. The Section 504 program asserts that no individual should be denied the benefit of a federally funded program due to their disability. So the 504 law applies to all federally funded organizations, so specific advice for school has historically been a little ambiguous, and so the Office of Civil Rights has been trying to catch up over time through DRC letter. But for many years, school districts really struggled about how to implement 504s in their district. What you should know is, in schools, students who have a disability that is found to be substantially limiting during their school day can be provided with 504 plans. The plans that are provided consist of accommodations that allow students access to their school activities but don't fundamentally alter those school activities. So an example of an accommodation that may be on a 504 plan would be something like extra time for a test. So a student, it still takes the test as all of the other students in their class, but they're allowed more time to do so because they have a hard time innately monitoring the passage of time, or they may have attention issues or something like that. Another example may be something like access to class notes. So they're still held to the same performance standards in that class, but if they have some challenge with fine motor, for example, that if they have cerebral palsy or something, they may not be able to actively take notes during class time. So they'll be provided with that accommodation. In Abington, we have seventy, a total of 73 students who have 504 plans. And something that we're always trying to do is improve our implementation of the 504 accommodation plans. Because like I said, historically, guidance to the school districts has been ambiguous, and so we're trying to just make sure that if a student is eligible for the 504 plan, we're in fact providing them the supports they need. But also, if a student is not eligible, we don't, we do not want to provide those accommodations just because we want to hold all students to the highest possible standard. So I just want to update you on a handful of things that we've done this year that we think will provide better access to 504 plans for students who need it. So first of all, we've made a lot of advances in terms of our documentation. So we've updated our eligibility forms so that a team actually has to document how a disability is substantially limiting, because that is the definition we have to go by, but what does that mean? 504 teams now have to spell that out. In addition, we've updated our parent input forms, because the idea is that we're trying to bring parents into our processes as much as possible, so we're giving them more opportunities to be precise in their input about their children. And also updated our teacher input forms, so that we can have, so 504 teams are usually composed of a 504 coordinator and parents, and usually a general ed representative, maybe a nurse, but not all of the people involved in a student's life are at the table, so sometimes you're making decisions within perfect information. So we figured if we update our parent input forms, we'll have more information so we can make better decisions. We've also updated our annual review process to mirror the IEP annual review process, which is that you can count on meeting once a year, you'll get a due process of invitation at least 10 school days in advance of the meeting, and you'll be reevaluated for eligibility every three years. This makes it so that you, as a parent, can really know what's coming and make sure that your child's plan is at least reviewed, but reviewed at least once every year. In addition, we've held a number of 504 coordinator meetings this year, so we have, each building has a 504 coordinator. But again, harkening back to the fact that there was ambiguity in the implementation of 504, the interpretations of some of our coordinators may have been different from Beaverbrook to Woodsdale to the middle schools to the high school. So the idea is, let's get together and arrive at shared understanding of practice. And also, if we have a case that's challenging, that we're not sure if a student may be eligible, or the student is eligible but we're not truly sure how to accommodate the student, we've been, we've been able to have some occasions to really kind of talk, talk through those issues. Additionally, just to make sure that we have almost state-of-the-art knowledge in terms of 504 implementation, we had an attorney, Marielle Saguerta, who works on a number of civil rights issues, actually come in for a number of hours to meet with myself and the 504 coordinators and a handful of principals, so that we could hear the law directly from this attorney, but also talk through some different cases. You know, we feel these efforts have been pretty fruitful in terms of enhancing our understanding of 504 and making sure that we're providing the supports for students who need it. Next item, the McKinney-Vento-Homless Assistance Act. So the idea behind this act is it ensures stability and education for children who have lost their homes. This, this law makes it that, so that a student who has become homeless has access to their school of origin or may enroll locally in the school that they arrive at, be it in a shelter or a foster care arrangement, so they can access either that previous school and they'll be provided transportation, or they can access the school where their parents were residing. Additionally, the law makes it so that a student who is homeless has access to all the activities that all of the currently housed students have access to. So if they need extra transportation or special arrangements to participate in something, they can have that. So currently, Abington has seven students who are homeless, but that number fluctuates considerably throughout the year. And so what we're doing to try to improve, to try to better meet the needs of this population is that we're trying to consolidate the literature on resources that are available in the immediate community. So if a member of the Abington community does become unexpectedly homeless, we can, we can, you know, actually provide them with detailed literature about, these are the social services that you can access. So I personally will be meeting with the social work interns in the district to spend some time really developing these materials, so by the end of the year, we'll be equipped to provide information to families who may need it.
Can I ask a quick question about this before we go to the next slide?
Sure.
The extracurricular activities, do those, let's just say in this case, seven students, are you the liaison for?
I am.
So do, do you reach out to them individually when it comes time for like intramurals at the middle school or art club, like, or do they just receive the letter that, like, anybody receives that says, "If you're facing financial hardship, write to us or talk to us and we can help you?"
Yeah, so they, so as far as protocol, they would just be receiving that letter. But with that said, because it's just a handful of students, usually when a student becomes unexpectedly homeless, the principal is well aware of it and will usually have some meetings with the family and be able to just identify what those, what those needs are.
Yeah, I was just thinking, like, I always read that form thinking, that's a hard thing to do, even if you are facing financial hardship, to reach out and say, you know, "Mr. McCurtin, we can't afford art club this time around." So in particularly when your worries are so great.
Yeah.
So I didn't know, like, we're lucky in a district like this, I guess, to only have just like a few. You know, where I, where I was previously, there was tons, double digits. So I didn't know if like, maybe if there's an option to do a little more. I'm just thinking, my own, my oldest being my first in the middle school, you start to see like how social those after-school pieces become part of like the culture of being a middle schooler. Like, it's exciting to stay after for intramurals or art club or drama, and I don't know, I feel like if they got a phone call that says, "Do you got, like, do you know that as part of this, if your child's interested in art or some, you know, we can talk about," I just think that connection might make that extracurricular piece more accessible than just waiting for them to reach out. I don't know, that's just a suggestion, I guess.
No, yeah, and well taken. I agree that that, you know, that special touch in, you know, in a moment of crisis could definitely promote some of the, some educational stability, which is the whole spirit of this law.
Yeah. And, you know, just a side note, I, you know, people who know me know I'm like honest, but the, I remember being in sixth grade and child of a single mother, and somebody reached out and was like, "Do you know she can go to ceramics?" And my mother would never have asked, like, or said, "We can't afford ceramics. Does she want to go?" She wouldn't, or can she go? And me, the child, being able to go to ceramics was like a really big deal. Like, I remember just being like, "This is, I can't believe they're letting me go for like, for free." So during a time that was just like a difficult time at home, so I guess like there's a personal piece here where I'm like, "Oh, this could be a really big deal to just a few, a handful of kids who I feel really, you know, I worry about them."
Well, thanks for contributing those suggestions.
Thanks.
We'll definitely take them under advisement, but I can say right away that I, you know, I agree with the sentiments. All right. So, next up, so our largest program within the realm of student services is special education. So our total special education enrollment is 366 students, which is an identification rate of approximately 17% of the student population. So in other words, about 1 in 6 students in our district has a disability status. This is actually pretty much in line with the regional average as well as the state average. And you should also know that just overall, there's been an increase of 46 students who have a disability status from this time last year. Where do those students come from? So a number of them have moved into our district, and a number of them is just have been newly identified. An area that we're just seeing more and more students being referred and found eligible is at the preschool level. Just over the past five years, that, that number has, has doubled. But it has been a significant increase for us over this year. When we think, fortunately this year, even though there has been a considerable increase, that's divided over 12 grades, or 13, 14, considering preschool and, and post-grad transition. So we, we kind of had the infrastructure to support that number. But when we look ahead to next year, one problem that we're really anticipating is the number of students moving from, from our second grade therapeutic learning center to our third grade therapeutic learning center. These students have pretty significant discrete trial programming for autism spectrum disorder, as well as one-to-one paraprofessional support and mobility challenges. There are also a number of students who are currently staying in that therapeutic learning center in the third and fourth grade, and we're adding a significant number on top of that. So that we anticipate to really be able to service these severe needs that we likely need another teacher in order to meet that need. In general, to better meet the needs of the special education population, we're exploring a number of improvement efforts. One area that is that we're broadening our use of assistive technology for students with disabilities. So starting at the end of January, we'll be training our middle school staff on the Read and Write software. This software is, is a user-friendly accessibility suite, and that means it includes tools such as word prediction, speech to text, and a picture dictionary, which allows students who may have a need to get, who may have a literacy base, a literacy-based need, to get support in the moment. So the idea is that if we, if we train our middle school staff on this software, they will in turn be staffing academic support classrooms, and they'll be able to use the software fluently. So that we're hoping as students kind of go through the middle school, they'll be able to essentially accommodate themselves because of our one-to-one software, our one-to-one initiative. So that, because the whole idea of special education is for them to identify individual coping strategies. And as you go on to college, a lot of our students with disabilities will identify specific accessibility tools, be it a, you know, a pen which can do audio recordings or something like that. And so the Read and Write software is a software that we know works well. So we'll be trialing that starting at the end of January. An additional assistive technology tool that we're just trying to enhance the use of is Bookshare. So what Bookshare is, is an archive of audio textbooks. And so what we're trying to do is just connect more and more students to this tool, so that those students who have reading challenges aren't precluded from engaging texts at a higher level. So if we remove that decoding challenge and allow them to listen to the text, they're more likely to be able to stay at a great level for some of the higher-order skills like reading comprehension and written expression, despite their challenges with decoding. Another component of our, of our effort to, to better serve our special education population is we're trying to do more to invest in our paraprofessionals. So as you may know, our paraprofessionals work directly with us, with students with disabilities, but there's no formal credentialing process for a professional, paraprofessional. And they tend to come really from all walks of life. Some of them may have, you know, a graduate, some of them may have a graduate degree, some of them may have extensive knowledge in education, whereas some folks may have just finished their bachelor's and have, have had no experience with education other than their own educational experience. So what we're trying to do is get everyone to have the same foundational knowledge, so that when they're working with our students, we can say, "Okay, you know, they've been exposed to the, to research-supported ideas on working with students." So on our, on our most recent professional development day, I worked with a number of paraprofessionals on instructional strategies. And then on the upcoming paraprofessional day on January 30th, myself, the school adjustment counselor, and a school psychologist will be working with the paraprofessionals on emotional management strategies. And then on the professional development day that is the following week, I'll be working with the behavioral staff to work with, to in turn work with paraprofessionals on behavioral management strategies. So for the rest of the year, on PD days, we'll have para-specific professional development. And just while we're on the topic of special education, this is just a courtesy reminder to anyone in the audience or anyone who's listening, that we are lucky to have an active special education parent advisory council. Abington hasn't always had an active council, and many of our surrounding districts do not have one, so we consider ourselves blessed. And the CPAC is sponsoring a Basic Rights Workshop on Tuesday, January 21st, from 6:30 to 8:30 in, in the library here. And the idea of the Basic Rights Workshop is we'll have an attorney from the Federation of Children with Special Needs who will be here to explain the eligibility process, how to, how to ask, how to make a referral to begin with, what to expect at an IEP team meeting, what, what are all the components of an IEP, what to do if you have a disagreement with the school staff, what are the dispute resolution opportunities that are available through the state? So if anyone has any questions on that, we invite you to join us Tuesday, January 21st to 6:30. So the last program that I'll speak about is the English Language Education Program. The idea of English Language Education is for students whose primary language is not English, and they need language support to achieve that success. These students participate in general education classes with teachers who are SEI endorsed as well as English Language Education classes. In Abington, the number has been steadily increasing over the past 10 years. In fact, it's grown 14-fold over 10 years. So currently, we have 144 English learners, which is an increase of 42 students from the previous school year.
Wow.
And what's more, is that 23 of those students are classified as newcomers, which require significant support throughout the day. Our current ratio for staff to English learners is 1 to 36 students. This ratio makes it difficult for us to satisfy DESI guidelines in terms of support. So in it, in our own effort to better, to better meet this need, to better meet this unanticipated need, we revised some of our staffing arrangements. For example, we've taken the ELL teacher from the Woodsdale. One day we can have them support the Beaverbrook. But in order to do that, we're taking from one, you know, one building to provide the other. So we, so in order to just better meet the need that is, that is clearly present right now, we anticipate that we would require an additional English language.
James, can I just ask you what was the definition of newcomers?
Yep, yeah, so that, that's someone where their experience with English is very limited. Essentially, they've just moved to the country, and through formal access testing, they've shown very little English language competency.
Okay. Thank you.
So some of, so despite the fact that we are at a, we feel a little bit, just our, our staffing arrangements are at a disadvantage to meet the needs of this population, some of the things we're still continuing to do to, to, to meet the needs is that we're conducting an English Language Education Program review. So this is myself, the ELL director, we have another administrator, which is Julie from Beaverbrook, a ELA teacher, which is Megan Tullman, kind of coming together and looking at all the data in the district to say, "Okay, where, where, where do we see ourselves falling short and what can be a path to, to, to meeting this need?" So we have an active ELA program review going. And also, because, because our population has, at the end of last year, exceeded 100, we're now considered a mid-incidence district. Before we were, we were a low-incidence district. And as a result, we had, we had to establish an ALPAP, which is, while, while it is, you know, mandatory according to the guidelines, it's still something we see as value-added. So it functions just as a CPAC where you have parents pull together to discuss English Language Education in our school district. And if anyone who's here tonight or watching at home is interested, next meeting is January 27th at 6:00 PM right here in the library. So that sums up all of the, the updates within the Department of Student Services. Are there any questions I can answer?
Anybody have any questions here, James? James, thank you for the time, I appreciate it. Up next is the report of the subcommittees, Business and Finance Subcommittee. Myself and Danielle met with Mr. Schaefer and Dr. Michella. Danielle met twice, I met once, I couldn't make one of them due to a work commitment, and went over the preliminary budget that you'll see very shortly. We discussed the needs that are going to be great, impacting the district the greatest, some of which James just hit on. You'll see very soon, I want to, I don't want to spoil it all, but I think we had a couple of questions, we asked them, I mean, there was nothing huge that won't be presented, I don't think. Danielle, do you have anything?
No, just the, the requests are logical based on the needs of the system that we're seeing right now, so.
Hey, yeah, I think having James present tonight will, like, helps lead into the biggest needs that are coming up. So the, for the update on the town managers, town manager search, what I can tell you is that, so originally last time, I think I said it, the window was closed, we were closing until December 31st. Because of Christmas, Thanksgiving, everything else, we, we had voted to extend it till January 31st. So the window's open till January 31st for people to apply. We actually have meetings set up right now on the 13th and 27th of January to review the applications that have come in, go over them. In February, we're going to set up some meetings to see who we want to invite in for, into the interview process. Conduct those during February, the goal is by very early March, like March 2nd or 3rd, to have those completed, and then meet again, determine who we want to pass to the Board of Selectmen. We have to give the Board of Selectmen at least three candidates that we've interviewed, so that is our goal. Our goal is to give them more, but at that point, it will be their job to handle it from there in the hiring process. We'll provide them with our interview notes or whatever, and they'll take it from there, conduct whatever interviews or whatever the process is on their end. I don't know if I'm supposed to say how many resumes we have right now, so I'm not going to, but there, we do have them coming in, so I don't know if anybody has any other questions on it. No? Okay. It's 7:30. Do we have to make a motion to enter a public hearing?
To go into a public session, yeah.
Okay. A roll call?
I don't think it has to be roll call.
Okay, so I'll look, so at this time, it is 7:30, that worked out nice, good job, James. We're going, I'm going to look for a motion to enter the public hearing on the budget, and then when we're done, we'll
Go back into.
Go back into our session. So I'll look for a motion to enter the public hearing on the budget.
I'll make a motion.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in the public hearing. Mr. Schaefer, I leave it to you on this one.
So I just want to start by saying this is the beginning. I want to start by saying this is the start. We're five, six months from town meeting. Everything you're going to hear about is a projection. It's a snapshot in time of where we are with anticipating what expenses will be, not only six months from town meeting, but, you know, for the, for, for next year, for the entirety of next year. So between now and town meeting, things will shift and things will move. I'll, I'll highlight those things specifically that, that will, I'm certain will move, and those things that I am more confident won't be moving in this presentation. So before I get into slideshow presentation, I'd like to just start with the budget packet that's being published after this meeting to the Finance Committee, to the Town Hall. I just want, I just want to talk about the, the things that are in it. Should people have questions, it is a good, it is a good reference. So in this budget packet, there is a, an overview that I provide that talks about, I found a typo on my
Oh, you did, okay.
Sorry. It really is the same, sorry.
Everything's the same, there's just one
Other than
Yeah.
Anyway, hopefully you didn't see it. I won't tell you.
See if you can find it.
So this message just really talks about the things driving our budget. Then there's the planning schedule, there's a history of budgets that goes back to 2009, '10. There's enrollment data, there are staffing totals, there's a major increase page, there is a section that talks about the different pieces of the pie and where different portions of the budget go, staffing request page, secondary instructional materials page, elementary instructional materials page, and then there is a spreadsheet, which is a breakdown by area, by building across the district. Please either have really good eyes or the, get us, get a bigger copy of it. We do that so we can get it all on one page that flows for people. Then you have the articles that we will be requesting, and that's, that's the budget packet. And I only highlight that to people so they know what's in it. I promise I won't, I won't be a line-by-line read, that will occur, we'll, we'll finance, the town finance committee will go through this with, with their schedule, and again, there'll be further deliberations as we, as we begin this process. So with regard to, unless people have questions about that budget publication, if you go to the slides?
Yeah, I was, I have questions about, like, specific numbers, but I don't know when the right time to ask that is.
Two numbers on
On, I have, I wrote them out. I wrote them down. Let's see. On the instructional materials requests, I just had a few questions. So I don't mind holding them. I don't know when they're...
I'll pause when we get there?
Yeah, let's do that.
So James will be hopefully assisting me with this. You'll be helping me go to the message?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm not going to read these slides to you, but I will hit the highlights of each slide. Next year, the total population of the Abington Public Schools will have increased by 253 students, or 12% since 2017. In the last year, the student population has increased 4.7%. In fact, next year, we're anticipating, we should see that same jump. I'll get into it further in another moment, but this will be the last year that we have a smaller class leaving the high school with a larger class entering. There are certain built-in increases in our budget, particularly special education and the salary account. The salary account is fixed. We know, Felicia knows, those numbers based on our current staffing levels and the degree status people will be achieving, steps and lanes. Special education is much more fluid. That will go up, but that changes daily depending on the placements of our children. And then education today requires more interaction with technology. This isn't about as much hardware as it is about software and online services that we've been successful using, that we want to continue with. So I'm going to start with positions. And I'm going to get into the major increase page and show how all of this goes together in a moment. You heard a presentation from James that talked about our English Language Learner population. And he talked about the number, the increase we've had. We currently have a long-term substitute in a position here, and we'll have someone coming back, or just had someone come back and leave recently. The plan is to hang on to that person for this year to provide some relief immediately because what James described is occurring and we have a great need. We'd like to add an English Language Learner teacher to our staffing requests. These requests aren't necessarily in priority order, but they're pretty close. Again, things could potentially shift as we head closer to town meeting, but clearly from the data we have and what we have identified as our needs, that's a need we have. Special education teacher at the Woodsdale, James talked about, that would create a sub-separate program. It would create an additional sub-separate program, which is needed as those students transition to the Woodsdale.
I just have one question, just back to ELL. You said there's a long-term sub that's there now, so you said they're going to keep them, like, so that person's coming back and then you're going to keep the ELL sub on?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Because we had such a dramatic increase.
Right, okay.
We're looking to provide relief as soon as possible. Special education teacher at the Woodsdale, kindergarten teacher, we anticipate that our class sizes could potentially go to 26. We want them more in the neighborhood of the low 20s. That would increase from seven sections to eight sections. That's based on students coming to us. We chart the demographics in terms of the birth year, the number of kiddos that were born in town, the number of students we have coming out of the pre-K. And then we also, Chris and Julie have been doing, putting in an extra effort in creating a database of students that are privates, because those are the great unknown. And so as much information as we can get about those students coming to us, because it's likely they'll come to us, so we're fairly confident in that number. Grade two teacher, to decrease our class size from anticipated 26 to 22. At the Beaverbrook, I think these things speak for themselves. We want to keep our lowest class sizes at the youngest grades. These are our children that are learning how to read. A specialized reading tutor, this would be someone who would provide Orton Gillingham at the middle school level. We have a number of students coming out of the Woodsdale that are in need of that assistance, that prescriptive and direct reading instruction. The high school. The high school, if you look at the numbers at the high school, they've basically added more than graduating class in the last four years. Graduating class has been running at about 100, between 110, I think, Dr. Sullivan. Each class now is about 130. We anticipate next year, we'll add another 40 students. So it's almost like instead of having four grades at the high school, now they feel like they've got five, just in terms of sheer numbers. So in terms of supporting the mission at the high school, everything from college applications to the importance of the data integrity, to communications, back and forth, media communications, long-term communications and publications, there's attendance, there's a myriad of tasks and things when you add another 30, 40, 35% to your student population so that the administrators and counselors can go about the task with more direct service to kids. So that's something that's important to us. Special education, paraprofessional at the high school. Currently, our students with uneducational plans are not receiving the support that we'd like to give them in our foreign language classes. It's a challenge for them. It's something that we want to provide to our students. Applying to colleges these days is also a benefit. It's also a benefit when you've taken foreign language classes, and those things are new transcripts, so we want to make sure that we support that effort in those classes. Next slide. Do you mind? Got it, thanks. Special education teacher at the Beaverbrook, James talked about the delivery of services and the increased number of challenges we have, especially at the elementary level. A history and social science teacher at the high school. With the increase in student population, what's happened is by offering fewer electives, Dr. Sullivan has been able to better shoulder the challenges of high class size, because a teacher would teach, would not teach an elective, they would, we would open up a section of classes. So what it does is it erodes your program of studies, because you can't offer what you want to offer in your competitive high school. So in order to maintain what we have in our history offering, we would want to do this. It would also provide, in full disclosure, the athletic director would teach, who's teaching a history class now, would not teach that class. The benefit that that provides is we also have an increased number of students participating in sports. We've increased our sports offerings by at least, I believe, three different teams. We've done a lot for our female athletes in terms of winter track and different volleyball. And the requirements for an athletic director these days in terms of just sheer paperwork and requirements from concussion to forms is beyond what it was years ago. So we're looking for that relief in that area. And then a esteemed teacher at the middle school would mean that we would, right now, we're fortunate, the good news is that we have a very exciting program of studies at the middle school. The bad news is that we have a very exciting program of studies at the middle school. It takes people out of their area of expertise to be able to offer in a small district the number of different things that we offer. So by adding this teacher, we would be able to take the math people out of this assignment and reduce class sizes in math at the middle school level. And so that brief explanation is why those are our top priorities in terms of our budget. I do not think, I mean, I hope we get all of these positions. I don't know that that'll happen. That'll depend on the number that we get as we work with what we anticipate funding will be for Abington. We don't know what the federal, what the state, or what the local, or what Chapter 70, the state number will be at this point. We are working to get that so that hopefully we can get those positions. These are other positions that were requested but weren't included. The only reason they weren't included is because the argument for adding those other positions was so compelling. Not that these are pie in the sky or out of, outer space requests for staffing. And actually, if we added the kindergarten, the elementary piece, we would be required to add some fraction of some of these other elements so that we could support those students in taking those classes also. I could do, I'll go back to maybe the major increase page and then do the materials and supplies?
Anyone else have any questions before I end?
We'll talk about positions.
Is there space at Beaverbrook? We were lucky to get the extra kindergarten in grade two. There's two empty classrooms for these bodies.
We would end up, and Chris and Julie will do a better job of this, we would have to move perhaps the art to an art on a cart.
There's a classroom that's being used to store art supplies. That would be converted back into a classroom. And then health and music are in the classroom also, so those would probably go onto a cart and move into the classroom and the teachers...
So the art would not be on a cart, but the health and music would travel to classroom?
Or depending on the schedule, they might all be able to share that space.
So they would have those specials in their classroom instead of going to a different class?
Potentially.
Okay.
Couple other questions, enrollment questions. One is for Dr. Sullivan. This is probably like a dumb question, but the senior class at 120 students, when they were sophomores, if you can follow this math, that class that came in as freshmen had an increase of 32 students. They did. Did you feel, like, because I'm looking at the class of eighth graders that are coming in as freshmen, will be an increase of 22 students? That's the big, which is comparable, not exact, but I'm wondering if you felt it? Like, did you feel it as third, did it feel like 32 students? Like, I know that's a good, but like, did it impact the school? Could you, that seems like a...
It does. And I can simplify, if 30 students come in and it was third grade, you'd have to add another classroom. If 30 students come in to the freshman class or any class, I'm going to add at least another section of English 9 and then math and so. Without hiring additional staff members, I'm going to have to delete or drop from program of studies any English elective, the history elective, or whatever compensates for that. I have a whole report coming your way when I present program of studies the next January evening that will show the 35% increase in five years and expected 42% increase in six years.
And because this 22 increase from eighth graders going to ninth grade doesn't include anyone who might move in?
Right. Correct. Or anybody who might go to a private high school.
Right. And that leads to my last question about enrollment.
Everybody from St. Bridges that might send to...
Right. So in sixth grade, six sections, it says the class size, is this an average? Is 28 students?
I believe it's a little lower than that right now.
So we started the year with 30 students in a classroom. Did we lose 12 sixth graders?
We did lose some of our sixth grade population. I believe we were at 29-ish and now we're at...
Yeah, it's never like you do numbers, it was 28 points or 29 points. We've experienced some loss, some pressure.
So you just take the total of the six homerooms divided by six? Okay, because I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought at the beginning of, at open house time, I remember being surprised that the class size in grade six was 30 or above. And the account for that was that, you joked about a billboard saying, like, come to Abington sixth grade, because there was the increase that we had, the specific to that grade level. So it surprised me to see it. I mean, it's still not, it's still the highest, but it just...
We went into this coming school year concerned with it at 26 or 27, and then it bumped up to about 29, and then it's backed off a little bit.
These are large increases from a year ago this time to the end of last year. And it's, I guess, it's sort of leveling down at this point.
So for example, with the kindergarten and the grade two position, those are the things we would continue to track and get the most up-to-date data on before we make those final decisions.
Mr. McCurtin, one other question for you for the staff total page. What happened in the year? You know what I'm going to ask. What happened 2016, '17 to 2017, '18 with the staff members going from 19 to 37.3?
Did it go from Philly to the new building?
Opened.
Okay. That's just it? They went to the new building?
Five, six. It's categorized in that column.
And then we've lost six elementary over a 10-year span?
Again, the 16 to 17, there's an 11-person drop, and those were picked up in the middle school.
Okay, got it.
Good question, because I looked at that sheet and thought the same thing.
You know what? Next year, I'm going to do an ASH, I'm going to identify that year as a reorg.
That makes sense. You asterisked the computer definition. I saw that one.
That's an old one, yep.
All right.
I'll do that for next year.
Good, more questions on staffing?
We have one bus driver?
Good question. We have one that is employed by the district that drives the lease bus, or bus one, and then the rest are first student employees.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I know we have more drivers and that, but I didn't know we had any actually that were Abington employees, so.
We have 2.5, so.
Going to the major increase page. So in terms of contractual obligations, it's anticipated if we move everybody over, what we have today till next year, the salary account would have a $642,008 increase. Those new positions that I highlighted are the $516,000 for a total increase to the salary account of $1.1 million. Now, there will be a retirement offset that will be taken out of this as we get closer to town meeting. We'll be more certain of what that will be. I like to mention that at this point, because I don't want people thinking that we're hiding that offset. That'll come later when we're more certain of that number. That will bring that number down depending on what that retirement offset is.
And that's not in here at all, right?
It's not in here at all. Because people can change their mind at this point. And so as we get closer, we're more confident. Programs of the districts, these are, this is an estimate of special education tuitions based on really two things. One is the migration of students in programs, both in and out. And then also, each of these programs at times will send us a letter saying that they're going to increase their cost. It's approved by the state by 1%, 2%, 3%, whatever it might be. And so those are factored in there. Circuit breaker offset of 70%. This adds a little bit to our budget, and this is a fairly aggressive offset number. We're hoping it's 75%. So the circuit breaker offset is a reimbursement program. After we spend $45,000 on a placement out of the district, the state pays us whatever percent on the dollar above that that we spend, and they reimburse us our costs. So if this number goes up to 75%, we would be closer to zero or maybe take something out of our budget or reduce our budget by some amount. So this...
Compared to this year's.
Compared to this year's. So this number as of today, and again, it's a snapshot in time, coupled with our special education tuition increase, provides the number of 633,000, $626. Transportation, we have a contract, we know what that number will be. It's just over $26,000, $26,739. Special education is another fluid cost center, depending on where students are going and the placements and how they might change. You may move in and move out. That's an anticipated increase of $10,575. That's an anticipated increase of ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. There's a five-year curriculum plan, and this would be an enablement for us to be able to purchase technology. We want to get into an ongoing cycle of purchasing replacement laptops and technology, because the, the computers that we received with the building as a part of the MSBA grant at some point will age. They're already, they're aging every day, and we want to get into a healthy budget cycle of replacing them annually, replacing the group. We will be all right next year if we don't, if we're not able to budget for this amount of money, because at a, a school building meeting, we were able to acquire the funds to bolster this, for this, for this coming cycle. NIESC visit is coming the fall of 2020, and that, those are, those are the costs of hosting that visit for a high school. That's something that we need to do in order to continue with our NIESC accreditation, which everyone obviously wants and needs us to do. For a total of the school service increase of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. For a preliminary budget increase of eight point three six percent, or one million nine hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This is a preliminary number. This number will be reduced as we approach town meeting, as accounts become clearer, as the num, as the numbers I told you, this become clearer, as we approach town meeting, our special education placement number becomes clearer and clearer as we get toward the end of the school year. So, after we've answered the questions, what I'll be asking the committee to consider is a preliminary budget total of twenty-five million eight hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and six dollars. So, again, after we, after we talk about this some more, that number would be submitted to the town, and then, as we approach town meeting, I'll be bringing updates to the committee, and then just prior to the meeting, I'll ask the committee to consider a final numbers for submission to the town. So, I'd like to answer people's questions.
I have one quick one. Dr. Michelle, maybe you can help answer this. Last year, when we had the preliminary budget hearing on January whatever, fifth or whatever, do you know what the eight percent increase we submitted then at the initial? Like, right now it's eight point three six percent that we're submitting as the increase. Do you know?
I don't know for sure.
Okay.
It was eight point one-ish.
Eight, eight percent.
Okay, okay. It was more, it was in the ballpark of where it is now. I guess that's what I was getting at, so.
Could we take a couple of minutes to go through the two pages of instructional materials? I just want to ask some questions related to that.
And if I don't know the details...
Dr. Cadori? Okay. I'll start with the secondary page, instructional materials request page. Does that, what grade levels does that cover?
Five through twelve.
Five through twelve?
Yep.
Okay. And then we've got K through four, well, because, the reason I ask that is because Dibble's ordering, just, it must just be sitting on the other page, it's K to five.
Yeah, yeah. So there's some that are district-wide, yeah. This is, so the way that this is disaggregated is just to, it puts it out there in the best way, there are things that are district-wide.
I'll tell you why I'm asking in a minute, but let me just make sure that I, okay. The other easy question is second step for K to two. AEF just paid out a grant to fund second step at the kindergarten level, is that correct? I'm curious what this second step funding will go for.
Second step is a kit per classroom?
Yep.
We currently have one kit per grade. AEF funded another kit per grade, so we've put in four more kits, because ideally each classroom has its own.
Every teacher, got it.
Right now they're sharing, or two classes come together to go through the program. That's a week.
Got it. Pearson's, in, what, all right, let me start with my broad lens, and then these questions will make sense. I'm sorry. So, what we, it's no secret that my, one of my passions at this table is curriculum instruction, and it's what I care about, and it's one of the only reasons that I bother to get a chair here as part of this committee. So, when I, why this is important to me is because what we invest our money in dictates what we value, and what direction we're gonna go in terms of curriculum instruction and teaching and learning. So if we want to change practice, instructional practice, we have to change what we purchase. So when you look, I'm looking at this broadly across a school district. I, I have, I, if you look at our instructional materials, and you, you group them, from Abington Middle School, Beaverbrook, Woodsdale. Pearson's and Visions, I'm guessing is that the online subscription or a combination of?
That's the math.
That's math? Workbooks?
It's everything.
Everything that you might need for math, including online subscriptions? Okay. So, does it cost more at the younger grade levels, K to two, or?
I, I might be able to answer. So, over the years since we've had these programs, things have been purchased, and every year there's a significant inventory that's done prior to purchasing. So, while one grade, if they had a dip in enrollment, over two years they may have consumables that don't need to be purchased. So, it isn't every year we're always gonna order a hundred and fifty of something.
That leads perfectly to my last, I'll make this my last question.
No, please.
So, if you look at McGraw-Hill purchasing
Yep.
at Beaverbrook, it's, you know, seven thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. McGraw-Hill at the middle school, four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Woodsdale didn't seem to put in any request for McGraw-Hill resources. Can you talk a little bit about, or someone talk about why that is, what that is, and why Woodsdale wouldn't need it?
So that, the McGraw-Hill predominantly is, for the Beaverbrook is looking at what James said earlier with ELL and the newcomers. So we're adding, because we have higher ELL population, we're adding more of the supports for ELL and the newcomers for the Beaverbrook, and we didn't need to order it, because we already have it for the grades three and four.
So you're not ordering, and those dollar amounts are not specific to just general education readers, they're not workbooks related to worksheets that students would be doing with the Wonders program?
Right, so within McGraw-Hill, it's, it was predominantly with a few things here and there, one-time purchase, and a lot of it's online. So this for K two for the Wonders, really for this coming year is for our ELL population that's increasing.
Can we see a breakdown when, and I don't, I'm guessing it's our, it's our right to see it?
Yeah.
Can, when this is ordered specifically for these schools, can we see what that dollar amount purchased? Can the committee see what that? Because the, the point that I'm, I'm sure you're inferring is that I, it's not a secret that certain schools, Woodsdale has adopted and embraced, and they're further along in the process of, I'll just speak for reading, which is the McGraw-Hill programming, that there's fewer paper-to-pencil tasks that come from the instructional materials released by McGraw-Hill. It just, I, I wanna see what our dollars, how they're spent in terms of, if it's just specific to ELL students, that I can wrap my brain around, but if we continue to purchase the worksheets that go to the Wonders program, we're not, we're, we're enabling and saying that that's, we support that type of classroom instruction, and I, I hear people present, I, I mean, it, it troubles them to me, because we present often up here about how we're making changes, and we're doing, and we, we say what we want to go towards, but where we spend our money, and what, it's, teachers, I am one, so whatever they put in front of me is what I'm going to use, unless they tell me otherwise. So I just think it's, this is an important time to really think about not just ordering more of the same that we've always ordered.
To next week, I'll have that detailed for next week.
By, by, by book, by title, by number of workbooks or...
Yep, I can see the requisition sheet, I just don't have it.
And, and, and it's made, might be a me problem, so this will help correct my thinking if I'm, if I'm off base.
Dr. Michelle, can I ask?
No, I don't, I don't think you're off base. I think that depends on, it depends on where these are targeted for. Like, you, I get your point. You're, we're putting our dollars where our biggest bang is, and you just want to see where that's going.
Well, I guess too, like, I want to make sure I understand, so are we saying that at Beaverbrook there was a surplus of ELL workbooks that went over to Woodsdale, and that's why you didn't need to purchase them, John?
No.
Or, like, I don't, why does Woodsdale not need McGraw-Hill? I, okay, do you know?
Do you want to take another shot at that answer?
We haven't needed to refresh the program here.
It was a one-time purchase, so, some people got what they needed in the first one-time purchase, and now we're bolstering based on numbers in ELL population.
There's really no consumables with Wonders. There are some consumables with the ELL portion, because it's a little bit more hands-on. We have enough with Woodsdale, but since we've had influx more at Beaverbrook, we didn't have the supports for the ELL.
Okay. And so, but those ELL, those ELLs at Beaverbrook are gonna be going to Woodsdale next year, so he just has enough? You have enough?
For each grade level, yeah. So he has what he needs for grades three and four.
Got it. Thank you.
And, and hopefully, book by book, dollar by dollar, you'll see.
Yeah, it'll make more sense to me, yeah, thank you.
Felicia, can I ask you one quick question? And it just, it has, it has to do with the instruction to a point, so the increase for the curriculum instruction, blah, 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 was a hundred and fifty grand in total, which is the laptop number?
Correct.
So is the rest of the instructional material virtually the same cost as last year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. In different categories.
Yeah, no, 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 I just, with it being exactly one fifty, the laptop being exactly one fifty, I figured that that was the increase.
The level funded.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Any remaining questions?
So if we could go back?
Yeah, so I'll be looking for a motion to go, to exit the public hearing and to go back into our regular session. I'll make a motion.
One second.
On the favor?
Right.
Okay. Out of public hearing.
And then, if I could ask the committee to consider a motion to submit to the town for twenty-five million eight hundred and eleven, six hundred and six dollars for the FY twenty twenty-one school department operating budget.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I should probably spend another minute on these other two
Yeah, that's fine.
questions, if that's okay?
I was gonna ask anyone.
One of, one of the other things I was gonna ask the committee this evening to consider is these next two pieces, the fourteen thousand dollars for student transportation services for other educational students as non-resident students for the coming year. So, the town is required to pay for the tuition cost at Norfolk Agricultural, and it's also required to pay for the transportation of those students at Norfolk Agricultural. Many towns, these line items are kept in the town budget, and Abington, we keep it in our budget, it really doesn't make a difference, because if we didn't keep it in our budget, they would just reduce our budget by this amount. So this pays for their transportation to Norfolk Aggie and Walpole.
And this amount sounds familiar, is this amount?
This is the amount we ask for every year, because what Felicia does is she works on the districts through, for a student to have one bus that travels through the South Shore and picks up, and she's the transportation coordinator for that, which saves all of those communities some money.
Okay. I'll make the motion for the fourteen thousand dollars. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the next one is under section fifty-three E and a half, Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty-four, for the town to be able to spend the money collected in fines from different tobaccos, places that sell tobacco products to minors, that that money be collected in Abington, and then it gets spent in this account on programs to smoking secession, educational materials for health classes around drug and alcohol awareness, tobacco, proactive educational approach to, to stop kids from participating in those activities.
This is an every-year thing, too.
This is also an every-year thing.
Do we typically spend this money in, in here, like, if we have this, like, is it, we provide programs to the school using this money?
So that's how much money is allowed to be in the account. It's funded through fines
Yeah.
which have honestly decreased significantly over the last few years. So, that's the most amount that can be in it. So, but yes, it is used for special programs.
So we use, like, does it carry over from year to year, so, like, do we use it on the school year, so?
Yep, but it's, that's, that's how much the account is set up to have as a maximum. Yeah.
I remember asking about that last year. Maybe could we just get a breakdown of, like, of what gets purchased? I know it's very, I, I learned from asking that it's very minimal
Yep.
amount of money, and that things like posters are bought, but it might be nice just to, I, I was always curious to, like, what...
We were talking about it today at the health and wellness meeting, about the amount of money that's in there, about, with the whole vaping epidemic and all that, looking to get speakers in, to talk to the students and educate them more and stuff, and Kate Casey was talking about this fund, so, I was just curious if it does get used every year, so. Right, so we need to make a motion?
Make a motion for, yeah, for the, for that fund.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on to the next thing, I just want to thank all the administration for coming tonight. I know it's a long day, so I appreciate you being here to answer any questions that any of us may have had, appreciate everything you've done. So, thank you very much before we move on to the next thing, because I know the extent of what it's worth to be here for. So, thank you.
So, the next item, and under my section, is the revised job descriptions for administrative assistant, paraprofessional, and tutor. We've created these, I think you're aware, with a lot of, with a lot of input, we talked about them at the last executive session, there's a lot of questions people have, but I think you, I think you spent some time on them, so I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it, unless you want to spend some time, more time on them.
No, this is, yeah, so we had our executive session out in November, right? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the job, the job descriptions as enclosed for administrative assistant, paraprofessional, and tutor. I'll make the motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I don't think I said I was, I was thinking of a question. I'm, I'm in favor of that motion. I didn't say anything, though, which is why you probably asked.
Kind of.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was, I was lost in thought. You go over your goals in detail with admins at a separate time, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, good. Okay. I'm all set, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead. So, my goals. So, I'm not, gonna read these to you, but I want to just highlight a couple of things if I could, and then, I want to thank people for their input, and I did get, I did get input from the committee, and I did get input from the administrative team, and the first goal, students, first student learning goal, support student engagement in a classroom by increasing the class of teachers and students center pedagogical practices that serve all students to improve academic achievement. So this is a reoccurring theme, this is the exact same wording as last year's goal. What's beneath it has either been updated or added to, depending on what was needed. Some, some pieces were removed, added, and, again, amended, because this is important work. Just highlighting about the administrative learning walks and debriefs, providing feedback to administration faculty staff about student, about student-centered pedagogical practices. So, this is an opportunity for us as administrative team to calibrate and have discussions about teaching and learning, building by building. This is non-evaluative, because it can't be evaluative. Generalities are brought back to faculties about those walks. The re, and that's why I added this next piece, because it's the teacher evaluation tool that provides targeted assistance and direct feedback to people, which has to be a different tool than those walks. So I put that there purposefully, and, and I'm just being honest, those, those evaluative pieces have been going on in Abington, that's not a new thing. But I put that there to provide, to communicate what I think needs to happen. It's not just a learning walk, it's also the evaluation tool, it's also professional development, which is also here. It's not just one-pronged... It's not just one-pronged, it's got to be multi-pronged, it's got to be a multi-pronged program. Additionally, provide targeted assistance teachers not fully using the Canvas and online gradebook. Preliminary information shows that we've got very good, brand-broad use of these products. But through our technology director, I'm discovering there are other tools we can use to monitor and see how much, what type of fidelity these things are being done. So that coupled with the second to last piece, utilize digital resource analytics to quantify student engagement growth with online classroom tools. So I believe in this online classroom tool piece, not just because technology's really cool, but it's because it does create a more student-centered, more personal experience for our students that they will be going into when they leave us and either go to college or the world of work. It's the medium that the world is using. And it's, it's a win-win-win because it is also a way to create more and more student-centered activities. It does not mean everything should be done on a computer, in no way do I mean that. However, I don't, I don't mean to convince people, I don't think of the benefit of us using them with our, with our students and preparing them for the future. The goal, the next goal of strategically increasing social emotional supports, materials and activities for our students in order to improve their wellness, resiliency, interpersonal skills and overall successes individuals. One of the new and key added elements here is gather information about our students' social emotional experiences to inform decisions about supports and programming. So last year, we spent a lot of time on sort of doing an assessment of what we're doing across the district, targeting and bolstering areas. We had things that we were proud of, things that we wanted, areas that we want to improve in. So we wanted to be strategic. We did that across the board to equalize. And we still are continuing with building that ramp for our students as they enter with us and they leave us in 12th grade of supports so that we can grow resilient individuals. And another added step would be gather additional information about them in terms of their experience so that we can better continue to target our assistance to them. Building base in grade level faculty reflection, expectation and responses about student behaviors and needs that provide developmentally appropriate respectful pre-K through 12th continuum. We've talked about that before, I've talked about that quite a bit. We are working on what does a graduate look like? The reason, I think that that's a good thing for us to do is it'll, we'll have many value discussions about our expectations of children as they move through our system. And that's how you get to the root of making change in, in all classrooms across the district. Improve and increase district and school lines of communication and transparency of expectations, policy protocol, successes and challenges. So the big takeaway from this one is completing a strategic plan where we bring in groups of people, stakeholders, and we talk about the next four to five years in the Abington public schools. We've had the vision 2020, which over five years has lost some of its, I think, power because it's a, it's a data document and anytime you pick something up, you're, and it's dated, it's suspect anyway. It's time for us to refresh that, bring people together and complete a strategic plan. So I actually happened to do a little bit of research on this. And I've got someone who's able to come if the committee would like to meet them, who could be a facilitator of this process for us. Because it's good to get an outsider to come and take what we feel and we see and, and put this together so it's not driven by any one thing or one person or one sway in Abington. It can be a collection of thoughts, a mission, vision and a strategic plan. So I could have them come in the, probably the May or the June meeting, if that works for people. Talk about the process. So I'll answer people's questions about these goals and look forward to hearing what you might have to say about them. Or when, you don't have to decide them tonight, you can decide them at a future date, that's up to the committee.
Hi, I have a question. I'm looking at the student learning. On the second page, the continue to evaluate and improve educational programming, student schedules and spaces for learning. So like Jackie, I have my piece that I'm really hoping to work on a little bit. So I know that we, I'm assuming that the continue to evaluate and improve educational programming and student schedules, that's where the high school schedule would fit in. And I know that it takes a while to work through things, so I would reserve any judgment and not, not critique anything until we've had time to see how things work. I don't know how they're working overall with the flex schedule, but I'm just wondering, I'm assuming that at the end of the year, that a survey would go out, that reflection piece?
Schedule would go out in January, so mid-point.
We're meeting tomorrow morning. Okay. Set aside on what possible questions we'd like to ask. So we have to write it first, but yes, the idea is that it's scheduled to go out. Great. And, you know, just to make sure, I'm sure you guys obviously are completely aware of the good and the bad from your, through your lens, but just checking to see what the teachers, what's working or not. And I know I've put out there, I don't, I don't love what's out there, I think that we can do better, but I know there are so many constraints in place that keep, keep us from going with something that might work in a system with, with more space for classrooms and easier ability to move faculty. So I just was double-checking to make sure that that schedule piece at the middle school, high school level fell into that category.
Does, district-wide? For the secondary? Yes.
Okay. One more thing, sorry. I did make one more note. On the strategically increased social emotional supports, when we talked about social and emotional needs, does Abington use Panorama? That's a question for another time, it was just off the top of my head.
I'm not recognizing it, no.
Okay. We can talk at some other point, but it was something that we've used in my district. It is a survey that takes time, but it offers individual information about students related to things like growth mindset and social connections with kids. So it was just something that crossed my mind. I don't know if it's district-wide something that we've used, but it provides a lot of data on each individual student and gives educators access to better understand where each student is at in their classroom.
Thank you.
The only comment really, or thought that I had was on this social emotional page, I was thinking about the survey that Mr. Robbins did, presented a while back about, I can't even remember who you surveyed, but it was maybe parents. It was that one that kind of?
Parents, teachers and students.
Parents, teachers and students. And the, the theme of anxiety, increase in maybe students feeling anxious was like one of the takeaways that was higher.
Right.
And I know, like, that we're not super specific in these anticipated activities and that that piece will be embedded and covered within there, but I'm just like wondering if, if there's a need maybe to think about any other anticipated activities specific to like naming, like a reduction in trying to find ways to reduce anxiety like across the district. Like I, I think that it's like specific to the, instead of just as wellness or social emotional, like naming it somewhere, I don't, I don't, and maybe it's not necessary and it just comes up in conversations amongst, but I was just thinking where it came out as such a specific thing in that survey.
I can tell you, here we're saying, so you're sort of looking at tier one, what are we doing for everybody, not just the targeted cases, say, I'm anxious, or that we're seeing all the time. And I, I think that that's a sample of the flex schedule was intended to provide every student with that breathing. Think of, thinking about what are we doing broadly?
Yes. And it makes me think of the schedule piece, like at the middle school, I know, and it's hard, like every year you try a schedule. I remember being in Mr. McCurtin's office in the summer for something and that, like, if you saw what was on the whiteboard for the way that they try to plan, it, it's, it's mind-blowing. It's not an easy task. But, but what has happened is that we have some students at the middle school who like go to specialist and like leave specialist and come to lunch and then go back to, like, there's so many transitions. And that actually isn't anxiety-producing where for some students who are like, how do I get my lunch and get back here and get here and get my backpack? So all of those little pieces related to the curriculum for social emotional and how we do human growth and development, like that piece wasn't even, that's a factor in like, in reducing anxiety with how do we deliver that curriculum? You know, which ways do we think about that? So, I don't know, just as something that I didn't, I think it may have been, I could be wrong, did you named it all in your last set of goals? Was there any more specificity related to?
To one aspect of social emotion?
Yeah.
I don't believe that there was.
Okay. Just a, it was just a comment. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was going to say, because it, to, to put it in a sentence, it sounds like you're saying, you know, what are we doing about the experience of anxiety specifically in, in a classroom wide kind of way that doesn't involve specific referral to a specialist?
Yeah, because you, you cast a wide net to survey everyone about their general feelings and what you caught was some pockets of like, I think it was in the 80 percentile of people, like students reporting that they feel levels of anxiety. That's a tier one, that's our general population, that's not students with anxiety, that's just general kids feeling anxious because like life is stressful and school is busy. So knowing what we know from bothering to give that survey, how do we connect those pieces to like this specific goal of social emotional well-being? That's just what I'm thinking about right now.
If there's a way in your mind that sort of crystallizes it, that you want to throw my way, I want to hear about it.
Have to think about it a little.
Knowing the work that we're doing now, especially with what does a graduate look like? And then what are we going to do about that? And then all of those other things that you saw and those grids that you've seen over time, I mean, I know we're hammering away at that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'll think on that a little bit.
Any other questions, Mr. Schaefer?
Are, is the committee okay making a motion to accept these tonight? I guess I'll ask, does anybody want to make a motion to accept these goals for the 20, for the 2020 goals?
Are you looking to add something?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't. You can change the anticipated act, you can edit those like at any time, right? Or, or are we making a motion to approve it as is?
Well, approve as is, however, there's a bunch of things I'm going to do under each one of these things, and that could be one of them.
Like the anticipated? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and anticipated means anticipated, so.
Right. Got it.
I could add activities.
Okay. I'm ready.
I'll be looking for a motion, Daniel already made the motion, right? Anybody second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of the goals as is?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, Mrs. Lemon, do you have a letter?
Yeah.
This letter?
So I'm going to take, I'm going to take the next item on the agenda. This is a request for a steering committee member for studying recommendations for the town own property on Glenett's Way, which is basically between here and Route 18. So we had previously directed Mr. Schaefer to send this following letter as a committee to the town for that property.
Right.
By guess reading the, the email from Mr. LaFawn to Mr. Schaefer, they're looking to develop a steering committee of members on what to do with that property now. So I'd be looking, first of all, I'd be looking to know if anybody is interested in doing it before we put a motion out there, putting somebody in there. I'm currently on the one for town manager search already. That's kind of enough for me right now.
I don't mind doing it. I would like to know a little bit more about the commitment. I'm assuming it wouldn't be anything over the top.
I would assume that as well, but I do not know if I'm sure, so.
But I, I don't mind.
I mean, if it's, if it is, and then we just refrain afterwards, so. All right, so I'm.
I won't, I won't fight anybody over. But I, I don't mind.
Okay, I'll, so then, that being the case, unless anybody objects, I'll make a motion to appoint Danielle Grafton as the school committee's representative or member or whatever they want to call it to the steering committee.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Danielle, you in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, Mr. Schaefer, you could let, so, thank you. Up next, next quarterly meeting date, last one we just had was like six weeks ago, the next one's in three weeks, Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, here at 7:00 PM.
Information.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So I apologize it's not in your packet, but we're getting drafts of these going as we speak and we're realizing that some of them may start going out to people before you get a chance to see them. Nothing that I need to ask you to consider to approve, I just want you to know what's going on and not have you see it and say, I wish you had told us what's going on. So Jackie said earlier, the impact that an after-school program had at the middle school level, this is along those lines. This is Boys and Girls Club that approached with some, they've got some grant money and we've got the Frollo building, which has some available space in it, and they're trying to get this off the ground. So this is a draft of what's going out. This isn't ready to go out yet, but the final will probably go out in the coming weeks. So I wanted you to know about it. So it's, so it's for grades five through eight. They're going to provide transportation in a shuttle van back and forth to the Frollo. And any engaging, supervised, safe, thoughtful activity for kids of this age group is, is a good one. Our students spend so much time on devices, I just advocated for us to be using computers, but to get them off devices and interacting with each other, programs like this would be a benefit. So we're excited about, hopefully it's a good success.
Well, thank you, thank you for sharing. So you have the North River Collaborative Annual Report is in here. I'm just going to call some out because I may have, I think I was, I don't know if everybody got this email or not. Chief Nuttall had sent an email asking originally to be on the agenda tonight regarding a property that for all intents purposes abuts Walmart on 123, but on the Abington side of it, obviously, so before you pass Walmart. I was told, Ms. Minahan actually went back and found that on March 24th, 2015, the school committee had already voted to give that piece of land back to the town. So it was no longer needed to be on here. If anybody was unsure why they thought it might be, now it wasn't, that's the answer. It's not ours to give anymore because we already did. So, and then the last thing was a letter to Chief Majenski prior to Christmas, they were, I don't know if they were residents or not, but who had come in and given gifts to those kids in need on the last day of school before Christmas break. It was just a letter sent to him to provide thanks. I don't think we had their address essentially is what it came down to, so to do it to them and thanking the officers who, police officer participated, I know Officer Lynch with Santa Claus throughout the building, so. And some key dates, this was last minute, so I don't know if it's, so AEF is not having a meeting Wednesday, their next meeting's not going to be until February 12th at Town Hall. Monday, January 20th, Martin Luther King, all school offices and buildings are closed, as Mr. Robbins mentioned. On Tuesday, January 21st, the CPAC is meeting here for their annual basic rights meeting at 6:30. And then I'm going to throw this in here and stop me if I get it wrong. On Monday, January 27th, the LEPA, LPAC, LPAC is meeting at 6:00 PM in the library?
Uh, yes.
Okay. The next night, 28th, is our next school community meeting, as mentioned, at 7:00. And then also mentioned, January 30th is the first in-service early release day of this year.
Also, the Boost is a meeting on Thursday, January 16th at 7:00 PM. They usually meet the first Wednesday.
Okay.
But they moved it from tomorrow night.
But they moved it from tomorrow night to January 16th.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
I'll put that in the notes.
Okay, perfect. So, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.